Head and call this meeting of June 21st, 2021 to order. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Council members, shippers.
I am here. I am in my daughter's sewing room in Nashville, Tennessee.
Oh, very good.
Alan Bass.
Here in Cadillac.
Ingalls.
Here in Cadillac.
King.
Here and attending in Cadillac.
Mayor Falcons.
Here in the city of Cadillac. At this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening.
This is council member shippers. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Alan Bass will second.
Also member Alan Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. We'll go ahead at this time and open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you would like to comment during the public comment section that you state your name and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
It looks like everybody is attending by computer, so if you want to be recognized, use the raise your hand feature and we can recognize you. I'm not seeing anybody at this time.
Not seeing anybody. We'll close public comment. And I also would like to just put out a reminder that when you're not speaking that you have your microphone off. Thank you. And then this evening for the consent agenda, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting from June 7th. And we also have the minutes from our closed session on June 7th, 2021. Could someone make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Council member shippers, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Those remember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alan Bass? Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening we have several communications. Sandy?
This is being recommended to approve the acceptance of the art sculpture donation from the Arts Council and approve its proposed location by the entrance to the canal from Lake Cadillac.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion to approve the acceptance of this beautiful art sculpture?
Yes, this is council member shippers. Um, I've been seeing some discussion asking if ice jams rise up at that site. And I, as far as I know, they don't. When the ice goes out, it usually goes off to the other end of the lake. Is that correct? Um, anybody who knows?
So this is Marcus just chiming in, and I apologize for the freight train in the background. I can advise that prior to bringing it to city council, I had Public Works go out and check out the site. And while I don't exactly know whether or not there's any ice jams that go there, in the packet, you'll notice that we highlighted a rather large area because we're not entirely sure exactly where X marks the spot. But I do know that that within that area, they're going to put it in a space where it won't, it won't be a problem or it won't cause a problem.
Perfect. I knew you would do that. I knew that would happen.
I appreciate that. Also, we checked with, I believe it was either the DNR or the DEQ as well to see if there was any right of way issues and there are not. So.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the acceptance of the art sculpture donation from the Arts Council and approve its proposed location by the entrance to the canal from Lake Cadillac.
Alan Bass will second.
Also member King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alan Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
It's gonna look nice there, I think.
Next request is to approve the fireworks display and the closure of Chestnut Street between the boat launch and the junior high from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM on July 4th, 2021 for the Cadillac Freedom Festival.
So Marcus, we did clarify that it is on the 4th and not on the 3rd.
That is correct. That is correct. I verified again with Sandy this morning just to make sure and that is true.
Even though the form says the 3rd.
Correct.
Yes, they submitted new forms.
Good.
New date.
So this is not like the whole Freedom Festival. It's just for fireworks, correct?
Yes.
Well, I guess I'll go ahead then unless somebody else wants to. I'm dominating the meeting here. Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the fireworks display and the closure of Chestnut Street between the boat launch and the junior high from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM on July 4th, 2021 for the Cadillac Freedom Festival.
Alan Bass will second again.
Council member shippers?
Yes.
Alan Bass? Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
The next request is to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harrison Cass from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM on the dates noted in July and August 2021 for the Clam Lake Band. Really?
I'll go ahead and do it, TI. I'll make the motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM on the dates noted in July and August 2021 for the Clam Lake Band.
And Alan Bass will second again.
Council member Alan Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Also being requested to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harrison Cass from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on August 27th, 2021 for the Cadillac Early Childhood Committee. We're going to hold a concert.
Who's playing at the concert?
That I don't see in the information.
Is there someone here who can give us some information? Anybody on?
This free concert educational for families, I think is what it says.
Well, I think that's a great idea. And I would like to make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on August 27th, 2021 for the Cadillac Area Early Childhood Committee's family concert. I can't wait to see it.
Alan Bass will second again.
Council member Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alan Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
You're still muted.
Yes, motion carries. How many times a day do I do that? It does look like it's an individual that's performing because it states that he's bringing his own equipment, but that's wonderful. Okay, that takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item under the report this evening is a request for approval of a contract with Vanguard Construction for the construction of the Shea Showcase. As the communication in the packet describes, the Shea Showcase is the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class's annual project this year. The project includes the complete removal and reconstruction of the shelter facility that currently protects and, no pun intended, but showcases the historic Shea locomotive that is in our city park. The leadership class has been very successful in their fundraising efforts to date and have raised approximately $90,000 and have secured about $15,000 in labor-related contributions as well. The project again is being fully funded through the chamber, but the chamber has requested that the city essentially project manage the project and be the fiduciary, which is why this item is before city council this evening with the request to waive bidding accordingly. And then secondly, with the request to move forward with the Shea Showcase project with Vanguard accordingly. The packet does include a rendering graphical representation of the improvements. And there are some folks from the chamber with us this evening. Should you have any detailed questions about their project as well?
So Marcus, let me ask one thing, okay? Just ease any fears. This isn't going to cost the taxpayers anything, correct?
That is correct.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, would someone like to make the motion to waive competitive bidding for the project?
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the Shea Showcase project. Alan Bass?
I'll second. It's King.
Council member shippers?
Yes.
Alan Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. And then the second part of this is to go ahead and make the motion to approve the contract with Vanguard Construction.
Alan Bass here. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Vanguard Construction for the Shea Showcase project in accordance with their proposal.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Council member Alan Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Now Kate Cam and Caitlin Barard are here from the chamber. Is there anything that you wanted to say about the project?
I just wanted to take a moment to basically just offer huge congratulations to this class and a thank you to the city for letting us partner with you on this. It's been an outstanding project and outstanding experience in a really tough year. I was nervous about what a community service project would look like in the time of COVID. And I'm just really excited to report that this has been one of our most successful and community-supported projects to date. So we're very excited to see it completed.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, that moves us on to our next item for the city manager.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and members of the city council. The next item is a request from Consumers Energy with respect to signage for the Consumers Community Solar Garden Project. That's the project currently taking place on the former Mitchell Bentley property off of Wright Street, perhaps most notably. The packet includes an aerial identifying the approximate location of the signage or of the monument type sign. And then it also includes a graphical drawing of the sign itself. I did send out late in the day an updated drawing. The only change to it is the color pattern that came about this morning when we had a meeting with consumers. They're changing the colors just a little bit. So it'll be white underneath the Cadillac logo and the listing of companies that are that are contributing into the project, but otherwise everything else is the same. So this is another milestone in the project. It's anticipated that this sign will be installed, perhaps not functional yet, but certainly installed by or before the ribbon cutting ceremony that has been scheduled for 11 o'clock on Monday, July 19th, that everyone will be invited to as well once they have their invites ready to go. So this is the request.
Okay. If there aren't any, if there isn't any discussion or there aren't any questions, would someone like to make the motion to approve the installation of the sign?
Yep. This is council member Ingalls. I'll make a motion to approve the installation of Consumers Community Solar Guarding signage as presented.
Shippers supports?
Council member Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alan Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The last item under the manager's report this evening is our standard COVID-19 update, which at this time will likely be the last time you'll see this update on our regular agenda unless, of course, there's pertinent information that needs to be shared. I can tell you it's been a really long haul, as I'm sure everyone knows and feels. Last week, our governor announced essentially the rescission of several orders that were out there through the Health Department and whatnot that's going to make Michigan effective at midnight, basically wide open. There's a little wrinkle, in a sense, still out there with respect to myosha and how employers need to still require that unvaccinated employees wear masks and socially distance. However, for the purposes of the city of Cadillac, with respect to our public meetings resuming in person, we are going to be starting that effective basically tomorrow, June 22nd. And so therefore, at least as we look at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, July 19th, this board will certainly be meeting in person only unless there's another issue or reason for you, for us not to. But at this point, it would be an in-person meeting. And I'm not sure, Mike, if you wanted to add anything to that or clarify anything. I may have mucked up. I know that there's a lot of moving pieces to it, but that's my COVID report.
No, and I think I accurately described the order that takes effect at midnight.
Okay, thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
This evening we do have to adopt a resolution. Marcus, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This is the final regularly scheduled meeting of our fiscal year. And accordingly, we have a resolution amending our General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2021, which is concluding effective June 30th. Our finance director, Owen Roberts, will walk everyone through this. But this has been our tradition or custom, if you will, that at the last regularly scheduled meeting of our fiscal year, we present for final consideration whatever loose ends that we have for the current fiscal year. And so we do have a handful of them to walk you through this evening. Owen?
Great. Thank you, Marcus. I'll try to be as brief as possible here. Feel free to stop me or at the end, happy to take any questions. So hard to believe we're at the end of another fiscal year. And so here's this budget amendment, starting out with the general fund with some revenue additions. And again, the explanations are in the documentation for the meeting. Wanted to highlight two of those for you, primarily the local community stabilization authority. This is the reimbursement for the personal property tax. That's once again pretty significantly in excess of what we had budgeted. So the 100% replacement of the revenue loss comes in October. And then the remainder comes from additional funds in May. And so we have received these funds and that's going to be about $357,000 in addition to what we had budgeted. So we're still trying to take a look at if we can have a little bit smaller of a bullseye in a budgeting. And we've had some discussions with the MML on that, but still working through that. At this point, suffice it to say, I think that it's better to be too much than less than what we've budgeted. Also wanted to highlight the contributions from private sources. So we've had a couple of funds come in that I think it's good for council to be aware of, and those are in the description. So there's a group of softball coaches and baseball coaches that have formed an organization. And they're trying to actually lead some renovations at the old Kaiser Field. Some people call them the old Casa Fields. We refer to them here as the Kaiser Fields. So they went out and applied for a grant and got $7,500 from the community foundation. And the city had, in discussions with them, I told them that we had about $2,500 on hand from when there was a church softball league out there that we had still not spent. And so that I would match any grant funds that they got up to that amount. So that was about $10,000 in funds that we were able to invest out in the the old fields there to try and kind of restore them again. And that work's been incremental here over the last couple of years. But really, we were able to invest a lot more of that this year because of those revenues that came in. So there's now working bathrooms out there again and some additional fence work out there. And those fields are in use most days of the week, which is kind of a new thing from the last couple of decades, I think. And so it's good to see those fields in use. Those are a city asset. And so we've been able to put a lot of that money into there and that really is how. So that sums up the revenue. Also wanted to just highlight all of these in the general fund. The net result of the general fund is instead of being slightly in the red for the year, the plan is to be at least $227,000 in the black once again. So adding to the fund balance, I think, which is always really good news. Going through the expenditure amendments. So many of the amendments in the general fund that you'll see tonight are the result of two retirements. And those were here in the administrative building with, we lost about 66 years of combined experience when Cindy Cornell and Fran Wallbank retired in October and March respectively. And so some, a lot of these salary and wage amendments are for long-term employees who have retired in the related final benefit payouts for those. So sorry to see them leave, happy for them, and we just need to amend those costs into the budget. So that's true for financial services and the clerk treasurer department. On the next page, that's also true for the engineering department, which simply is a cost center where the engineering secretary was classified. And it's true down in the planning and zoning department. Up in the elections, there was, as you can imagine, a lot of additional costs due to having a presidential election during COVID. As you saw in the revenue section, we did receive some grant funds for about $5,000, which offset a lot of these costs. But we just need to amend in some of the additional costs for the election. In public works, in sidewalks and alleys, there was some additional work done in that department for the DPW worker classifications. Any addition to one cost center basically kind of has some offsetting reductions in other cost centers. They may not be directly in the general fund, but throughout the major local street fund, there will be a coinciding reduction in the costs that we spend in those departments. So it's just a factor of where that activity is focused for the year. One additional amendment in planning and zoning publication costs have gone up pretty significantly. And with all the work that they've done with some of the all the meetings and the amendments they've done to some of those things, there were some additional publication costs. And these are directly for making the publications that were legally required to do typically in the Cadillac news. Moving to page three, if you're following along, in community development, this is probably community investment, maybe a better name for that cost center. But special projects are if there's funds that come in the year from private sources or special projects, this is where we classify those projects. So this is where we're having some of the Kaiser Field costs as well as some other investments made with some of those funds that have come in. And again, in community promotions, this is DPW hours and activities. So an increase in this department will have an offsetting decrease somewhere else within the overall city budget. Transfers to other funds, this is for lake treatment for the year. At the end of fiscal year 20, we had anticipated having about $16,000 left in the old village funds that had come in for this year's treatment. There was just only about $10,000 actually that were remaining at the end of the year. So this proposed amendment would transfer $10,000 to that lake treatment fund in order to cover this cost. And then again, as you remember from this year's budget discussions, there's an appropriation from this year for fiscal year 22 to fund those costs from the general fund as well. Again, overall, $227,000 to the black after this amendment at the end of the year. I'll try and move a little bit quicker through some of these other secondary funds of the city. The first one is the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund. And this is just a reflection of the actual activities. So we do still have some residual grant funds coming in from the state of Michigan for the Lost Project and some final costs as we enter phase two of that. There still is, I believe it's $30,000 or $40,000 left that we can draw from that grant in order to help the final cleanup activities on that site. And then the contractual services are just a reflection of paying the consultant for that work. The principal payment I wanted to highlight, a number of years ago when Dollar General was built, that was a Brownfield site. And there was a low interest loan taken from the state of Michigan for that that was able to be paid back with captured tax dollars. That loan was actually scheduled to pay off in 2027. But due to the success of the project and the level of capture that was available, that loan is now paid off about six years early. So that was good news and a very successful Brownfield project for Dollar General. On the major street fund, this is, the number is big, but it's simply a timing thing. So we have, we had the budget for Chestnut Street Phase Two, which is gonna come in at budget, but it's getting started so late that those costs really, I know that project really got underway pretty heavy today. The bulk of those costs won't come until the next year. But the same thing happened last year. So the budgets for Chestnut Street Phase One, Mason Street and West Bremer Street were in the prior year budget, but because of the timing of those projects, those costs were incurred in the current year. So that was a little bit more than what we had budgeted this year. But again, the projects were different. The timing of these projects were budgeted for in the prior year. Page five, the lake treatment fund. Again, this is to just recognize the transfer in from the general fund in order to pay for the current year costs. The 2016 capital improvement bonds interest was just slightly over what was originally budgeted. That was just a slight amount of $2,000. So I had to appropriate just a small additional amount into there. On the 2020 capital improvement bonds, the bond proceeds can be used to pay for the bond issuance costs. So the remainder of the proceeds go to actual project funds. But these costs can be paid again out of this fund with bond proceeds. So this appropriates those bond issuance costs. Two more funds, I think the market capital project fund, I know this one's been out there a few years. We did finally receive the final funds that we were expecting on this project, which was a $50,000 grant from the USDA. And it covered some of the amenities at the site, some cameras and some other, the bike racks, sound system, donor signs, things like that. So it looks like, I don't. it looks like I don't, we're not expecting any more revenue on this. But there is about even after this, this year's cost, there's about thirty eight thousand dollars remaining in that project fund. And so those can be used either at the site for additional amenities or repairs. I know the screens are out for repair right now. We'll see what we have to to do with those, but or they can be reappropriated for another use. Finally, Mitchell Bentley Cleanup Fund. This was just a capital project temporary fund while that project was taking place. And so there are some some final costs being incurred as that project slowly wraps up, and this amendment simply reflects what was what was what took place this year. So some of it still is grant, and there are some loan funds coming in. Contractual services are for an environmental consultant on the site. Construction is the actual cleanup cost as pitch companies wraps up their work out there. So that was a lot. Happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, if no one has any questions, would someone like to make the motion to adopt the resolution amending the General Appropriations Act?
Yes, this is Councilmember Ingles. Make a motion to adopt the resolution amending General Appropriations Act for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one.
Councilmember Shippers supports.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment.
I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Then we will go ahead and close public comment and move to the Good of the Order. And this evening, I would like to just start the Good of the Order. Letting council know that I do understand that there's a desire to have us reboot and update a new evaluation tool for Marcus's annual performance review. And that it is something that has come up a few times over the last several years. Although our current evaluation tool is a hybrid of sorts that tries to measure more so in a qualitative way, the manager's performance. It also applies a quantitative metric as well. That being said, it hasn't been updated in quite some time. So as I look ahead, you know, we're we're going to be able to meet in person. And hopefully, our lives get back to normal with our schedules, et cetera, et cetera. And so I would like to this evening commit to the council that in the very near future, because if we're gonna update the tool, we have to make it so that it's a tool that Marcus begins working from for his annual performance review next year. So what I'd like to do is to go ahead and schedule special work session. It's gonna take more than one, obviously, but get the first special work session scheduled as soon as possible. And ask for the council's commitment to stay together and and work together to come up with, you know, either updating and or creating the evaluation tool that we'll use in the future that everyone feels comfortable with. You know, one of our greatest responsibilities as council members is to provide the annual performance review for the city manager. And so that being said, our discussion in closed session tonight isn't about the tool that we're using, but really about Marcus's performance for the last year. So I hope that we can stay focused on that and share the information with Marcus that, you know, we provided during the the written performance evaluations that you all provided, or most of the council provided. Because I I think that discussion is good, and we're allowing the opportunity, or Marcus, as I should say, he requested that we go into open session, but the opportunity for that conversation that we just sometimes can't have on paper. So thank you. Does anyone else have anything for the Good of the Order this evening?
I I do. And and Mayor, thank you very much for your comments, because that is of great concern to me. I think our very most important function as a council is the oversight of the manager. And how we do that is critical. And as you know, for the past three years, I've been pushing to see us grow from how we've done it. Saying that, I will be making a motion tonight after the Good of the Order to table this, because I don't believe this year, A, we voted as a council to determine which two council members would meet with Marcus. I have a concern that there was a meeting with him before we've had the opportunity as a full council to discuss each other's thoughts. And I think if we're going to be responsible doing this, we have to take the time and the attention to detail to meet as a council and discuss it before we can sit down and meet with the manager to discuss what needs to be done. What I'm hoping is, is, and I think we've talked about before, this has been delayed a little bit this year because so much has been going on. There is not a rush. And I'm very pleased to hear that we're talking about, I would love to do a work session to be able to give Marcus goals and metrics for next year. But I don't think we can look back tonight and make any real meaningful decision on the performance up to this year without the council getting together as a whole and discussing it in a special closed session that the manager's not present for. And I would like to set that up and do that. And also, I have a vote as to which two members should should meet with him following that discussion. So there's a meaningful discussion with him so that he can succeed. But I do think we want to be a board that's more than a mediocre board, that strives to be mediocre simply by checking boxes, handing in those checkboxes. Two people having a discussion with the manager without discussing it with the other three in in an actual discussion, not just with checkboxes. So that we can be the best community we can be, and we can help our manager be the best manager.
Yeah, Mike, can you talk to me about the manager being in the meeting versus out the meeting? Is that at the manager's? Is that the manager's decision, the council's decision to be in closed session discussing it with us?
So under the Open Meetings Act, there's a provision to conduct a periodic value, periodic evaluation in closed session at the manager's request. That doesn't mean that it's a unilateral issue. So what happens is the manager can request that, the city council can agree to do it in closed session. There's no requirement that the manager actually be present, although there is a provision under the Open Meetings Act that says if the manager wants to be present, all he would have to do is revoke his request, and then all of those discussions would have to happen in an open meeting.
And then I was, as this came up this week, what does the managers, does Marcus's contract say anything about the evaluation tool or tying it to raises or what? Whether there needs to be an evaluation tool or what the council does? Did you get a chance to look at that at all?
Yeah, well, I've looked at the the agreement, and the agreement says that the manager, that the criteria for which the council ultimately decides has to be done in consultation with the city manager. At least, that's the way the agreement reads currently.
Does that mean like deciding the metric and deciding the form has to be done in consultation? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't I don't read, I don't read the contract to say that the I I should put it in the affirmative. I read the contract to say that the council has the ultimate responsibility and decision making of what that criteria is. Only that the city council is required under the current agreement to develop that criteria in consultation with the city manager.
I mean, I think the mayor's idea of a work session is is a great idea. Having us all in person around a table would be a good way to hash this out probably pretty quickly.
Well, this is Councilmember Shippers, and I think a work session to look at a tool moving forward is a good idea. Actually, I think that meeting as as council members to have a discussion about Marcus's performance is, that throws up red flags to me, because as we all know, some of us are very skilled at persuasion and at arguing points on in a in a group, and others are maybe less skilled at that. The most effective, and in all my time, all these many, many years of being in public service and of being in a a public organization like public schools, and we have if there's more than one person doing an evaluation, they need to be done independently. Thus, the written evaluation. Now, the evaluation that we do is not just checkboxes. There are boxes to check that evaluate, you know, the level of proficiency in specific areas. But then there's also an opportunity, as you know, Councilmember King, because you wrote a quite lengthy addendum, there's an opportunity to put in writing your thoughts regarding the performance of the the city man, excuse me, the city manager. When you get in a in a room with a group of people where one or the other has a greater power of persuasion, you don't get an accurate picture of of each individual's experience. And I think the idea of having each individual's experience be then put together, scored, all of the comments, every single comment of every single council member is visible and put in writing, in record. And then the discussion of our thinking along with the city manager, I think would be so much more effective to meet in a closed room without the person you're evaluating there and try to talk about things. I don't see how that would be helpful in creating a more effective city manager or a more positive environment for the city on a whole, at a whole, as a whole. I find that it's kind of unusual. You know, I was a a union president for many years, and there is there is no way I would have agreed to a group meeting without the person present to do an evaluation. The idea of the evaluation is you make your opinions, you 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 put your whatever data you have, whatever your ideas are separately, compile them. Then, as we are planning to do tonight, get together where we can discuss what we already expressed in writing and have the opportunity to share that as a whole. And I think that's so much more effective than getting in a room where, you know, where things can get hijacked, or things can go one way or the other, and one person or another's voice may not be heard. Whether it be something that that person feels there's a need for improvement, you get in a room and you get steamrolled by people making comments to the contrary, and you just kind of don't, you know, may not want to speak up. I think that in writing first, and then meeting as a whole to discuss what we do in writing with the manager is the most effective. And and this idea that it leads to mediocrity surprises me because I have seen, you know, I I could understand that if the city was not thriving, but at this point, you know, I just, I don't, I don't understand it. But that's for, you know, that's a discussion, and and you can have that opinion and put it in writing. And then we can discuss that. But I feel very strongly opposed to us tabling this starting over with criteria that it would be so unfair to us meet and say, okay, this is what we're going to evaluate him on. And as of last year, without him knowing what that criteria is. He has, this is a tool that we've been using, and so he knows what the points are and what kind of things we expect. And to just present new ones, table this, get together, come up with something else, and then measure him against criteria he had no idea of is, I I don't see how that would be helpful. That's my thinking.
I just in in, or Councilmember Shippers, I understand your thoughts. I can tell you whether it was the CWTA Board or any other board, public or private, I never have had an evaluation where the board does not meet alone without the employee to discuss performance prior to meeting with the employee. And also, I will again say, I'm not sure how this year, two members of council met with Marcus without us voting who would take on that task. So I think it would be appropriate to table this, but but that's for the motion.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add to the discussion that the reason that it happens the way it does, it actually, I believe in Marcus's contract in regards to his annual evaluation, is that it's only required that the mayor will meet with him before the closed session with the council to meet with him and go over the summary, basically, to prepare him for the discussion. And so a couple of years ago, or I don't even know, I think since I've been there, I've never done that by myself. It's always been the mayor pro tem that and the mayor that have done it. So we can certainly talk about that moving forward. You know, in in all good intentions, talk about, you know, what what is it gonna look like moving forward? Because as I say, in his agreement right now, it just says the mayor. And this tool was being used before I got here, and I think it was in place TI when TI first came on the board. So if you wouldn't mind, I would like to ask Mike a question. You know, you deal with a lot of different municipalities and different cities. And just as we think about the process moving forward, as we as we go and think about going into these work sessions, are we so very different? Or can you provide us maybe your thoughts on how we can beef up beef up this tool and and or work to the to the ends that we would like to get to in regards to coming up with a document that we we and Marcus can agree upon?
Sure, I I'm happy to help the city in whatever lawful, obviously, objectives that you want to pursue. So I I don't have a problem with that. I will say that, you know, I've I've done or I've been involved with meetings involving a lot of evaluations, and I can only recall, I think, one time where we did not have the employee there that was the subject of the evaluation. And that was because it was not a periodic evaluation, but it was to hear complaints or charges that had been put in writing to the public body where they had to actually do an investigation. And even then, while it was, because the Open Meetings Act is kind of interesting in this regard, where you know, the employee at any time during that process has the right to rescind their request to go into closed session. And then you have to immediately return to an open session to have that discussion. So it it does not, it does not provide the any public body the opportunity to have those discussions in a closed session without the consent of the individual named either in the periodic evaluation or in those charges or written complaints. So so that's kind of a weird kind of twist to the Open Meetings Act, that it it has to be both the employee requesting it and the public body agreeing to it. And at any time, the employee can withdraw their request. So and I just want to point out, only because I have copies of the of the contract. Paragraph six, and I'll just read it because it's very brief. Excuse me, it says, "The council shall review and..." Excuse me. Um, it says, "The council shall review and evaluate the performance of the employee at least once annually. This review and evaluation shall be in accordance with specific criteria developed jointly by the employee and the council. The criteria may be revised as council may from time to time determine in consultation with the employee. Further, the mayor shall provide the employee with a written summary of the findings of the council and provide an adequate opportunity for the employee to discuss his evaluation with the council."
We still on Good Order? I don't have anything else.
Yeah, we still are on Good Order. Does anyone else have anything to add? Okay. With that done, we'll close Good Order. And we are scheduled to go into closed session.
I would go ahead and make a motion to table going into closed session to meet with the manager to set a time for council to be able to meet and discuss with each other their evaluations for which the manager could either have us do that in public or, uh, request that we do that in closed session uh, ahead of meeting with him. And I think that it is absolutely critical based on our duty um, in, and, uh, to do the job we are meant to do.
Ellen Bass will second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
No.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
No.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
No.
I'll make a second motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Michigan case law fifteen point two six eight to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager, public officer, and employee at his written request.
Shipper support?
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Hey, give me one second.
Councilmember Shippers, I'll make a motion to return to open session.
Ellen Bass will second.
Sandy, you're seated.
Sandy, same here.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Uh, Sandy, thank you for bringing us back into open session. And, uh, thank you to my fellow council members for your time and discussion in closed session this evening as it relates to the annual review of the city manager. As I report out to the public, I'd like to state how much I appreciate the effort that council makes in providing, uh, good feedback and participation in this annual process. As discussed earlier, there's certain, uh, I think we all agree it's certainly time to take a look at the tool we use moving forward, but, um, you know, I think everybody did a good, most everyone did a good job of participating in, in a positive, uh, performance review. So at this time, I would like to just report out on, uh, the summary of the annual, uh, performance for this year. And, uh, so I'll offer the, the following summary. The tool we use is a scale of one to five. One being unsatisfactory, two being needs improvement, three being meets expectations, four is exceeding them, and five is outstanding. Now, sometimes we can land between the two and it might be a three point five and it might be a two point five, but the tool, um, gives us the ability to measure that. So there were five, um, evaluation categories, the first one being budgeting and fiscal management. And Marcus all also does, um, a self-evaluation in how he feels like he has performed this year. And I would say that Marcus, um, gave himself a three, that he meets expectations in this category. In the summary of all of the council's evaluations, we actually, uh, came up with a four. He exceeds in the budgeting and fiscal management category. The, um, second category for evaluation is supervision and leadership. And Marcus's self-evaluation, he said that he felt, feels as though he exceeds in this category. And the council agreed, um, that he does exceed in this category. The third is community relations. And there are lots of different questions under each of these, uh, categories. So, uh, again, Marcus felt he exceeds in this category and the council uh, overall agreed, uh, with that, that he does exceed in that category. And, um, so on, in regards to intergovernmental relations, Marcus, uh, said that he exceeds in that category. Um, and, but the council said that it, it was, uh, like a two point seven five, that he meets it and close to exceeds it. And then the last one is professional development. And, um, Marcus's response on that was that he meets it and the council's, um, summation, uh, was that he exceeds it. Um, so I, I would also share with the public that council member, uh, actually Mayor Pro Temp, uh, Shippers and I met with Marcus last Friday and provided the summary, the evaluation summary of, uh, all of the, um, evaluations, individual evaluations, um, in order to prepare him for our discussion in closed session this evening. So although it may not be an, it may not be unusual for the annual compensation of a city manager to be adjusted at a different rate or a different level than the rest of the non-union staff. Our manager Marcus has actually, for the second consecutive year in a row, um, has requested that his annual adjustment match that of other non-union staff. Uh, retro, which back to what would have been his evaluation date, uh, which was May seventeen, this past May. And so the percentage going to the non-union staff that he is asking for is a three percent increase, cost of living increase. And so what this would mean, that three percent uh, actually takes the manager from one hundred and seven thousand nine thirty-nine to one hundred and eleven thousand one seventy-seven. May I have a motion accordingly?
And, uh, I just have one point of clarification from Mr. Homier, Mayor. I think we actually have to do two motions. One motion would be, do we vote to renew the contract? And then a second motion, if that passes, to provide a raise.
Yeah, I don't think that the, uh, contract requires that it be extended because it's indefinite. That is, uh, it can be terminated, I suppose, for the reasons stated in the agreement itself. If you give me a second, I can get to it. Sorry, this is all contained in one PDF. That's why with all the amendments. Yeah, so paragraph, um, paragraph two of the agreement talks about term um, and states that the employee, uh, commenced employment with the city on November first, two thousand nine, which shall be the employee's anniversary date. The employee serves for an indefinite term at the pleasure of the city. Uh, nothing in this agreement shall prevent, limit, or otherwise interfere with the rights of the city council to terminate the employment of the employee at any time with or without cause, subject only to the provisions set forth herein. Nothing in this agreement shall prevent, limit, or otherwise interfere with the right of the employee to resign at any time from his position as city manager, subject only to the provisions herein. Um, and then depending on, um, how or why the agreement is terminated, there are certain ramifications from that.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
So what do we need to do then?
Um, I asked if someone would make a motion accordingly.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. Um, I don't even think this is a raise. I was just reading the Fed raised its inflation expectation at three point four percent on the year and we're giving him a three, you know, three percent cost of living increased. So I'm going to make a motion that we increase the salary of the city manager by three percent, raising it to a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Make that retroactive to May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Is that the correct motion, Mike? Did I say that?
Yeah, so, um, this is, um, in prior years, uh, the council has made similar motions to adjust the salary. That salary would be an amendment to paragraph five of the agreement. Um, and there has been a series over the years of, uh, similar motions to change that. So the agreement would actually be an amendment to the, uh, paragraph five of the agreement, uh, which would then be revised to reflect that three percent increase in the amount stated.
Okay, yes, three percent retroactive to May seventeenth.
Yeah, we, sorry, in that, um, in those prior amendments, it just becomes effective May eighteenth.
So it's just in the eighteenth?
Well, so, yeah, so the, because of the way the prior, uh, contract and the amendments are, it becomes effective May eighteenth, which is the, it's, it's just another way of saying the same thing.
Okay. Effective May eighteenth then. And that's my motion.
And this is Councilmember Shippers. I'll support.
Councilmember King?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass? Ellen Bass?
Nailed it still.
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting for this evening. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Seth.
Good night.
Thanks.